America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia and anyone else present that plans to record. All right, welcome to this meeting, Chelmsford School Committee. As you know, the main focus of tonight's meeting is to discuss the fiscal year 21 school department budget. There will be time at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. If you have any questions about the budget, you have the opportunity to come and speak with the committee. We will then go through the budget in all the individual pages and then there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting if you have any further questions. So the first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes for our meeting on February 4th.
I make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting, regular meeting minutes from February 4th, 2020.
Second?
Okay, any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, next up, our Chelmsford High School representatives.
Hello, everyone, these are the updates on our school. Tonight, Chelmsford is hosting a tournament game for our girls' basketball team at 7:00 PM. And Evan Kinney and Evan Goodall won the Wrestling States this past weekend. And on February 28th, Middlesex Community College is coming to CHS to talk about dual enrollment at 7:30 PM, or AM, sorry.
AM.
And also, on February 28th, there's the festival play at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 PM. And starting tomorrow, there'll be a youth risk behavior survey that covers all aspects. And MKS ELA retests are March 2nd to 5th, and MKS math retests are March 6th to 9th.
Also, Junior Parent College Night is on March 4th at 7:00 PM. On March 9th, there are winter sports awards at 6:30 PM in the pack. Also, on March 9th, we will be starting our new House Olympics. So it's the same as Spirit Week, except instead of competing by your class, it's by your house. And so on Monday, we'll be starting with a senior versus faculty basketball game at 7:00 PM. Tuesday will be seniors versus faculty hockey game at 3:00. Wednesday will be a dodgeball tournament, which is open for all grades. Thursday will be a talent show, and Friday will be the Shamrock Shake Dance.
Thank you very much. Okay, any good news?
So a couple pieces of good news. I do have a high school one that you guys didn't get. This is very exciting. Physics Department, they received a $1,500 stipend from the Armed Forces Communication and Electronics Association to launch rockets at CHS. That's exciting. And this week is the South Row Science Fair, which is tomorrow night, actually. On Thursday morning, please join Dr. Lang and myself for some community coffee at the Java Room at 8:00 AM. And the annual K-12 Youth Art Month exhibit is going to be at the Chelmsford Public Library, and that's going to be on March 4th from 5:00 to 6:30. That's a really nice event to go to.
Okay, any other good news?
I'm just going to let, make sure that Sudeep and Katrina get a chance to go because they have to go represent CHS at the basketball game.
Absolutely.
So they will not be here for the evening.
Okay. Okay, we're now to the public comment part of our meeting. If anyone would like to speak to the committee about any of the items on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address for the recording secretary. Nobody? Okay, so we're going to move on to new business then.
Great. Yes, we actually, we do have one presentation this evening. I'd like to invite Katie Sims, and I know she has some faculty with her, I'll let you introduce when you come on up. But Katie is going to present on some of the work that's happening, particularly at the high school, with regard to physical education. So I welcome Katie.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to be here to give you a little clip and spotlight on the high school physical education program. We've had some new things recently, new courses, new equipment, that we'd like to share with you tonight. We have, I have two PE teachers here from the high school, and then we have one of our Chelmsford High School seniors here. So Michelle Sloan, one of the teachers, Logan is a senior at Chelmsford High School, and then Matt Correnti is another PE teacher at the high school here with us today. So thank you three for joining us, and thank you for having us tonight. So some of the things that we're going to talk about tonight, we are going to, we just recently changed some of our courses and course sequencing at the high school, so we're just going to briefly go over what those new courses look like. We have a new ropes course at the high school. We have a high ropes course that if you drive through the front of the high school parking lot, you can actually see some of the high elements. What you probably can't see from the street or the parking lot are the low elements that were installed at the high school. Those are inside the woods, and they installed five different low elements in there. And then we have a brand-new 18-hole disc golf course on the Chelmsford Public Schools' campus. Nine holes are at McCarthy, and then another nine holes at CHS. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little while. And then the last thing we're going to share with you is some professional development that the middle school and high school PE teachers have gone through this year on the sport of orienteering, and how we're going to start integrating that into our physical education classes for the 2020-2021 school year. So just to start, we have some of our grade nine and grade 10 courses at the high school. We have, for grade nine, we have elective courses, that's all freshmen can elect to take. We have yoga and fitness, and then we have lifetime sports for those electives. For grade 10 students, they can choose one of the following three classes as one of their required PE classes, so they can take exercise and conditioning, they can take team games, or they can take wellness activities for their sophomore year. As far as junior and senior year go, again, we have three courses. Students can choose one for their requirement. And then for senior year, we have three electives that students can choose. Strength and conditioning, team games, and wellness activities are all junior classes. And then for our senior electives, we have advanced PE, techniques and principles and athletic training, and unified physical education. So we're excited about the new course sequencing and where we are, where we're going moving forward. So next, I'll let the teachers, my teachers here, talk a little bit about the ropes course training that we went, that they went through in September. They went through three and a half days of training. So they got a lot of good PD and training on belaying, safety. They had to physically do all of the low and high elements as part of the training, so that was a challenge as well, but they persevered and did amazing. So I don't know if you guys want to share a little bit about the training?
I'll start with the training. So we started with the low elements and with ones they installed. And we have a wild woozy, which is a triangle of, on the ground, well, about foot from the ground, a triangle of wires. And one person's on one side, one person's on the other side, and you have to try and get as far as you can. And you could be, you know, laying out like this at the end, you know, or bending over, you know, sideways like that. But, and you have spotters, and, you know, you're trying to teach the kids to self-control, you know, don't do anything crazy, jumping on the wires, trying to make somebody fall off or anything. So you're trying to get them all together. It's easier when there's phys ed teachers doing it, because we've had that management for ourselves before. Then we went to a wall. We have to get everybody up and over the wall, and there's commands for that, and there's safety issues for that. We have a maze where it's attached to a whole bunch of different trees, and somebody gets inside, and they shut their eyes, and their partner has to direct them through the maze, whether it's a final, whether they have to touch each tree, or there's a final destination. And there's a lot of things we can do competitively with that, too, so that's kind of fun. Basically, everything is based around safety, you know, and cooperation and encouragement. Because then we get to the high ropes, and there's a lot of communication needed, a lot of encouragement. We don't make the students climb, but they do have to be involved. For instance, they can help belay, they can help spot, they can help tie the knots, their whole, and just plain old encouragement. Because when, for some people, it looks easy, but they get up, you know, one notch, and they're looking down, and they're saying, "I'm done." But then they have encouragement from their, from their peers. And it's really a lot of fun, and there's so much learning, you know, and so much camaraderie for the classes in general. So we were trained to do this, tying the knots, doing the, setting it up, breaking it down. There's really a lot to it. I don't know if you want to add more?
No, she hit, she hit most of it. It was a great three days. It was a lot of fun. It's always good to be with our other PE teachers, too, in an environment that we all love, especially since it's so new to me. I learned a ton, and I've used it all fall, and then I plan to do it all spring as well. So it was a good three days, that's for sure. And then, I don't know if Noah wants to speak now about the high ropes?
Sure.
So this is, this is Noah. Noah was in Mr. Marshall's class, and in that class, he was brought out, and he can talk a lot about how you don't have to necessarily climb to be involved, right?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Noah.
So I didn't get the chance to climb it, but I did get the chance to help and support the people who were. And when I was supporting, there was, I think, eight of us in total, four supporting each person. We all had a very important role to support the person climbing. So if, like, one person didn't perform their best, you had other people there, too. And it's a big team effort, so it shows teamwork, and you learn with other people. It's also a good bonding.
Yeah, because even though only two people are climbing at once, there's a whole row of belayers that gets the whole class involved. And then not to mention, while someone's climbing, others are getting ready, supporting, cheering on. I mean, Noah's class was a great example of how something like this can bring a whole class together and really overcome obstacles and achieve things you never thought you'd be able to before, so it was pretty cool.
I think that's a nice progression from the middle school ropes courses to the high school ropes courses as well. We don't have the students in the middle school belaying the other students, so that's new to high school students. And then the two high elements at the high school are meant for team or pair challenges in cooperation. So you're meant to go up with one other person, and it's meant to, so that you need that other person to get you up to the top. So we have one, that's like the vertical playpen, that has ropes, tires, poles, so you can, you can go up a variety of different ways. The second one, the dangling duo, it looks, if you're at CHS in the parking lot, it looks like just a large ladder. But once you get up close, those rungs are pretty far apart from each other, and every rung that you go up, it's another four inches apart, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're climbing up in the air. You, you need a lot of support to get to the top. Even when the teachers did it, there was no teacher that just went right up to the top by themselves, which the other, the other element, you could in some ways potentially get up there yourself, but the dangling duo, you, you need someone else to get you up there. A leg to stand on, an arm to pull you up, whatever it may be. So I think those are nice additions and differences from like the middle school challenge courses to the ropes courses at the high school. Logan, did you want to share anything about your experiences on the ropes courses?
On the high ropes, I do not climb either. I'm absolutely terrified of heights. But I did belay almost every person in my class that went up. I was the oldest in my class, I was the only senior in my class with a lot of freshmen. So it was a lot of trust that they had to, that they put in me to help them get up. It definitely brought our class together significantly. We kind of had like groups of people before we went and did the ropes course, and after the ropes course, we were all just one big class, because it's a lot of trust you have to put in four people to hold you up in the air. And then with the low rope course, it may not seem like it's as much trust in other people, but it definitely is. The wall was a big thing for our class. I'm a cheerleader at the high school, so helping get the people over the wall was my main responsibility. And that took a lot of communication and teamwork, you know, teaching the other people how to help pick the people up. Once we got the first person over, it was a little bit easier to help pull people over, but it was still a lot of work, because usually you get the small people up first, and then they have to pull bigger people. And things like spotting other classmates, it's a lot of trust you're putting in somebody. Like, you're laying out on a thin wire, trusting somebody to, like, catch you if you fall, really brings everybody together. And the one in the bottom right corner, where it's, it's a bunch of different types of elements, that is, that was probably the hardest one for us to do as a class, because we're all trying to get from one tree to the next, into the next, into the next. And that was, that took the most communication, because it was trial and error. Like, one person got on, and they did something wrong, so they passed that on to everybody else. But I think this is probably, this is, I like this one better than the middle schools, because I feel like it brings us together a lot more, and like, I actually feel like I'm helping whether I'm on the course or off the course.
Great, thank you. All right, well, that's it for our ropes courses. So next, we're going to talk about our disc golf courses that were installed this past fall. So like I said before, we have nine holes at McCarthy, we have nine holes at CHS. We're really excited. If you've been driving by either one of those schools, you've probably seen the, you know, fancy white baskets sticking out of the ground. Those are for the disc golf course. And if you've never played disc golf before, it's, it's played similarly to the game of golf. As you're trying, you're trying, you're getting, you're starting at point A, you're trying to get the frisbee, in this case, into the basket, and you're trying to get the least amount of shots in order to do that. Currently, the baskets are just installed, the tees, the tee boxes are not installed yet. Those will be installed in the spring, and those will not be anything that's sticking out of the ground. There'll be bricks that are cemented into the ground, and it will just be like a golf course, where you stand in the middle of the bricks and you tee off from there, which you would, for disc golf, you would throw the frisbee. So we are really excited that the students at McCarthy, the students at the high, at Chelmsford High School can use these courses during the school day. And then this is also something that's open to the Chelmsford community. There is no disc golf course in Chelmsford, so we are the first one to have one, which is pretty cool. I think the closest courses to us, there's one in Devens, Haverhill, Pepperill, so a good distance away, so it's nice to have one here. And this is something that any level and any age group can do. So here, we have some students that are playing. We have some of the coordinators got out there one of the days and was playing. And then I also have a picture up here of my four and five-year-old are playing, and they had never thrown a frisbee in their life. So literally, you don't, you can beat any skill level. It's just a fun activity to do, pretty low maintenance. All you need is a disc, a disc golf frisbee. So we brought some to share with you today, because I know a lot of people have never seen or played disc golf, so it's not a regular frisbee. They feel very different. And just like regular golf, they have drivers, they have putters, they have all types of discs that you can use when you're playing disc golf. A lot of communities and towns use them for fundraisers. So that's one thing that they do with them, and then just, it's a good community building thing to have, I think, in Chelmsford, and that we're excited about.
Katie?
Yes?
Question for you.
Yes?
You said there's different frisbees, so you have like a driving frisbee and a putting frisbee?
Yes.
You'd switch it out during the hole?
So you can, so a couple, a couple of the ones that we brought there are just standard frisbees you can use for any shot. You can use it for a driver, mid-range shot, or a putter. But if you wanted to go to kind of the next level, you can go to the store and buy different distance discs. That they go different discs.
The people walk around in the woods with, like, a duffel bag of their frisbees lined up, and then based on the distance, they go driver, or they go, they're close, they pull out their putter. And the big thing is the difference in thickness along the frisbee. I don't go that far, but.
People are a little bit more competitive.
I haven't gone that far yet. But they walk around in their duffel bags, and it's all lined up, and then they, they pick out their favorite one, and then they, they, either a driver, or a putter, or a fairway. So it's, it's, it's big. It's, and to have one on the high school campus, I've, I've never seen a high school have one, especially one so, like, in, close by, where we don't really have to, like, worry about going off campus, or like, kind, it's all right in the fields, and it's, it's a great aspect. Really quickly, going off what Katie was saying about how the coordinators were doing it, and how her, her sons were doing it, the classes at Chelmsford High School, I've done it with my Unified students. Noah has done it with team games, competitive. I've done it with yoga fit. Michelle's done it with her team games. It's for every type of class, every type of student. And it's, it's such a good aspect, especially because while Noah's belaying and climbing, there's two tees, or three tees, right there. So even if it's a huge class, and we got 16 people working, and there's still five left over, they can disc golf. And it's just all right there, so it's, it's worked out perfect. It's added a huge amount of flexibility to our curriculum, and I love it. It's, it's a whole lot of fun, for sure. And I invite all of you guys to come, come join. The high ropes as well.
Another unique thing about the disc golf courses are they, if you go to other towns, they're typically all in the woods.
Yeah.
So that is a little bit unique, that we pulled it outside of the woods. We did that for the feasibility of using it at any time of the day. We couldn't just send students into the woods and not be able to see part of the class and only the other part of the class.
Keep them out of the woods.
Be some issues with that. So we weren't sure how it was going to work, but from the teachers' experiences with their classes, it's worked out really well, so we're really excited about that. We have some, so the tee boxes are going in this spring, and also maps will be put out there, so there'll be a map at the first hole at McCarthy, and then there'll also be a map at the first hole at Chelmsford High School. And then, like you see up here, there's a QR code. We're going to have those QR codes made into decals, and we're going to have those decals put right on every single basket, so all someone would need with them is a phone, they pull up their camera, they scan the QR code, and they'll be able to see where the next tee box is, where the next hole is, or see the entire course in a PDF. So when they, when someone scans their QR code, then the entire course will come up like this in a PDF, which is nice. So someone that's not from Chelmsford, or has never played it before, is not really sure where to go, they could just take out their phone, scan the QR code, and the PDF of the entire map, the entire course would come up. So we brought little presents for you today. We brought you your own QR codes that you can take with you. So we have one for McCarthy, one for CHS, so feel free to take one of each and, and keep them for yourselves.
Can I just ask, on the McCarthy, are those baskets, are any of those fields still being used by, like, softball or anything? Are they going to?
We worked outside of the field space.
Okay.
Yeah, so Dan Hart and I walked the course together before we put anything in.
Okay.
The only issue that we have is a very short timeframe, I think, in, in the fall, in the spring maybe, with the javelin, with one of the baskets.
Okay.
So they would just close, they would close off that basket. But it's like an hour window where they would be playing that, not necessarily people would be playing disc golf.
And I'll be there for all track meets and track practices, so it won't be a huge problem.
You can relay that information.
Yeah.
So the last thing that we wanted to share with you tonight is just the professional development that the middle school and the high school PE teachers have had this year on orienteering. If you've never heard about orienteering, it can be just very laid back, low-key, walking type of sport, or it can be highly competitive sport. You can kind of run the gamut, similar to disc golf, except I think with orienteering, you can probably, you can get on teams and be even more competitive. All it is, is a series of checkpoints that you would put out. The professional development we did, they were just portable checkpoints. They were either on cones, on PVC pipes, whatever it may be, whatever you have. And a lot of it is teaching students how to orient a map and read it correctly. So they're going from one checkpoint to another, to another, with a partner or a group of students in the class, and trying to get through all these checkpoints by reading maps. They, the PE teachers for the professional development have done a couple of different courses, some with technology, some without technology, which is nice. So they've seen different variations of how you can do it. You can do it for a set amount of time, you can say, "All right, you two," or "this group," you can go see how many checkpoints you can get to in 20 minutes and then come back. Or you could make it a little bit more competitive and say, "Okay, you have to get to checkpoints one through five, and it's a race. See who can do it the fastest." So there's a variety of different ways that you can do it. I think the middle school and high school PE teachers are excited to try this out. We haven't tried it out in our classes yet, so we're going to try it out in the fall. They have one more professional development day coming up in April, where they're kind of putting unit plans, lessons, plans together, so they can be kind of off and running in the fall. Do you have anything else to share?
We won in the training.
You won the first day.
Just in case anybody was asking.
They went through the snow and everything. They were soaking wet.
We were sweating, not, not with the snow, because we were sprinting across the fields. And it was like a PD, I've never been a parter before, but we won.
That was the most important thing.
Still competitive.
Yes. So up here, we have a picture of what an orient, orienteering map looks like. And this, this one has a course on it, so you can see, like, there's numbers one through six. So there were, there could be check, there are checkpoints at all of those locations. And like I said, you could do it in a variety of different ways. You could do it timed, you could do, you could make it competitive, you could have some students try to do it for the fastest time, you could have other students just try to get to all six checkpoints by a certain amount of time. It was really fun to go through the professional development, and we actually participated in ourselves, in it ourselves. And the funny thing about one of the ones that we did at the high school, there were some checkpoints on one side of the building, some on the other, but the, the school is out of bounds, so you can't, you can't go in the school, which for some of the checkpoints would have been much easier, you could just go through one door and then out the other, but you had to navigate your way around. So it's nice to be able to integrate this kind of newer sport with some map-reading skills with our students. And it will be nice to be able to do at the middle school level, and then at an even higher level at the high school.
Do they use compasses?
What's that?
Do they use compasses? Because I notice you have, like, northeast, southeast.
Yeah, no, we didn't do any, we didn't do any challenges with compasses as part of it. I know some of the more competitive, elite orienteers, they, some use compasses and some don't. I think the most important part about orienteering is the different parts of the maps and how to read the maps and things like that.
I'm a compass failure, so it's okay.
Okay, so that wouldn't be work for you.
It would be a lot of work.
We did have the company, so we're working with Navigation Games. They've provided the professional development and helped us with a lot of the training, so they did go to Parker and McCarthy for one day this year. They spent half the day at Parker, half the day at McCarthy, and ran through this with our students, because we wanted to see what the students thought before moving forward with it. And they absolutely loved it, they were asking for it. The students that didn't have PE that day were pretty bummed out, and they wanted to know when their train, when it was coming to them. So we said we were working on it, and it probably wouldn't be till next year, but they had a lot of great feedback for us, too, which was nice. So anything else?
With the thank you, whoever put in the Bluetooth speakers in the gym, thank you. Um, with the thank you, whoever put in the Bluetooth speakers in the gym, thank you. We were, we were rolling in the uh, speakers and we didn't know what cord to use, what, what device we had. You can't put a round peg in a square hole, so sometimes it was broken, so you had to plug it in and lift your hand and it would work. And so the Bluetooth, alls we have to do is, is connect it, set it up, and music is very enhancing to a phys ed class.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's really nice.
It's been great, yes. There's a, it's nice in the fitness center and then, and in the gym, um, which the students have really enjoyed.
We're spoiled.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I was just gonna say, I think that we're very fortunate um, to have um, as many of these types of activities available to our students as we do. Um, I think they're a little bit less traditional, so that I think offers a, a opportunity for more participation uh, from kids. And um, I can see how this would really help with the social emotional learning aspect um, of some of the work that we're doing um, in the schools, especially around the low and high ropes um, course and um, other elements that you're using. And um, I think it's terrific that we're building in a lifelong wellness habits for these kids. Um, so these aren't necessarily athletics that you have, or typical, traditional team sports, but things that people can take, you know, after high school and continue on to their adult life. So I think that's really terrific. Thank you.
Great, thank you, for saying that.
Anyone else? Any questions? Alright.
Great, thank you for having us. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I think we have one budget.
Uh, we do. We actually, item number two on the agenda this evening is just pertaining to the current fiscal twenty budget. And it's a budget transfer request. I'll ask Joanna to just run through with the committee, please.
Thank you. This is just uh, one request for a budget transfer for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Going from the salary reserve COLA account uh, to the copy admin, copier administration account. There are different um, DESI function codes. Um, we, um, the five-year lease ended on the copiers. So we made the decision to purchase rather than lease again. It just made financial sense. And um, while we're still favorable in the category, there will be some costs over the next five months that uh, we will put the category slightly over. And that's what's, um, why I'm bringing the request to you. And some of the things that will still be coming is purchasing toner supplies and then the cost of having the Rico copy center at the high school. We'd like to continue that um, service. After the transfer, the, um, right now the salary reserve COLA account is still favorable. Um, and by seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then after this transfer, it'll still be favorable um, by thirty-two thousand thirteen dollars.
Any questions? Anything to motion?
I make a motion to make a transfer from the salary reserve COLA account to the copier admin account in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second? Any other comments, question? What, what, we're purchasing the copies. What's the lifespan on the copiers? We think?
It really varies by usage, so um, machines, let's say the ones that we installed at the high school just because of the number of staff that utilize them, the number of copies, um, those are gonna age a little bit quicker. It needs to be replaced a little bit sooner. Um, a copier, again, depending on use and care or whatnot, can typically run somewhere around three million copies. Um, so it really just depends on usage. I would think that this fleet that we bought, we did buy a, a better model than we previously had in the district that we were leasing. Um, the average machine is probably gonna get um, you know, four plus years out of it. You, you are gonna have some that, again, because the usage might um, have to be changed a little earlier. And then you are gonna have some, if it's not quite as heavy of a volume machine, that might go six, seven years. Um, under this particular purchase agreement, it was a state contract purchase. The first three years uh, come with free maintenance and service on the machine, so that's why when we get to that page of the budget, you're gonna see the um, the spend for the next couple of years go down. And then after three years, again, we own the machines, we'll put them on a service plan, and we'll basically be paying for the clicks or the number of copies that we use. Um, so you'll see the budget start to go up a tad at that point, but you're uh, three years down the line at that point.
Do we use PaperCut or anything like that?
We do.
We do, we have that installed on the machines.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, anything else? Okay, take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Great. Alright, on to the budget.
Yes, so I am, I mentioned earlier to Dennis, I'm, I'm not gonna uh, go through the presentation that we did at the last school committee meeting where we uh, covered the budget. Uh, but this evening, what we typically do, um, you have budget book in front of you. If anyone in the audience is watching, we do have extra ones on the table uh, when you came in. So if you wanted to grab a copy so you could follow along, you're welcome to. Basically, the DESI function codes, it starts with eleven-ten, the school committee, and goes all the way down to ninety-three-hundred, the tuitions. These are the uh, line items that the school committee ultimately approves. Uh, and then these uh, comprise the sixty-three million dollar overall local operating budget for the district. Um, so what we did previously, and I would recommend this evening, is actually going uh, page by page um, through the budget. Um, we'll uh, make a vote to accept the bottom line of that particular page. Uh, we'll talk about uh, the page itself, answer any questions people may have. And then, uh, because this is financial, the school committee would take a roll call vote on each page of the budget. Uh, and as we work our way through at the very end, there would be one cumulative vote to accept a thr- uh, sixty-three million dollar budget, which ultimately goes on to a town meeting in April. Um, and again, if we make any adjustments along the way, that's fine as well, but um, they would be um, recognized on page sixteen. And then page sixteen is typically what we do. Again, those are those line items. That's what we have to live within. Um, so you saw like earlier this evening when Joanna brought a uh, budget transfer request in, uh, that's because we were going outside of function codes. So we have the ability within a function code to move money on the, say, that page of the budget. Um, but if we're gonna move money from one page to another, we need to come to the school committee for approval. Um, so in the end, these are the line items that you're actually approving. So, if that would make sense.
Yeah, any question on the process? Okay, so basically, you're gonna go page by page. If everybody has questions, um, nobody asked them and then we'll take a motion to approve that particular page and then we'll move on. So, um, we're gonna start at page seventeen, which is school committee. Um, anybody have any questions on that particular area?
Just to clarify, other expenses would include our annual conference, our dues and our policies.
Hosting of the MASC policies online, again, it would be any conferences that the school committee members would attend. Um, dues to MASC and I believe dues also to the um, uh, NASDAQ group that does all of our enrollment projections annually for us. That gets paid out of that line as well.
What if you have MASC in for a workshop like we did a couple, a couple summers ago?
Correct.
Alright, other questions on that? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars on page seventeen of the budget book. Function one-one-one-zero, school committee.
Second?
Okay, any other questions? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
We're on a roll.
Alright, moving on to page eighteen, uh, we have superintendent's budget. Uh, any questions here?
What's the contracted services?
Uh, contracted services is a, a set aside at this point. I, um, and as we go through the budget book, anytime I saw a number that was uh, varied greatly year over year, I added a little note section. Um, so that's actually some funding that we've put aside uh, to continue some enhancements to the district website. So as you know, we convened a, a group a year on the group um, to take a look at our website, um, keeping it in-house with the current vendor that we have. Um, should we act, ooh, sorry, should we purchase a, a different product and rebuild the website? So we have put uh, funds there to be able to do that. So that's, that's what those funds are earmarked for.
Other questions on? Now, I, I watch this like, I mean, they're also redoing their website. Is there any coordination?
I didn't know that. Um, I don't necessarily know that they would. We share links with each other, so our site would link off of theirs and, and vice versa. But I don't think there'd be any economy of scale uh, by doing that together.
Alright, any other questions on superintendent's budget?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of four hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars on page eighteen of the budget book. Function twelve-ten, uh, superintendent.
Second?
Donna, you're gonna be busy tonight.
Anything else? Kate?
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, page nineteen, assistant superintendent. Any questions here?
When did this, under this supplies, this is also for your curriculum coordinators as well, right?
Um, no, they actually are in a different line. This is supplies just for the office. It, some of it does overlap, but most of it's just for the office.
Okay, any other things on this particular page? John?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of two hundred forty-four thousand dollars on page nineteen of the budget book. Function twelve-twenty, assistant superintendent.
Second?
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, page twenty, uh, district wide. Uh, any questions on this one? So this is where the copiers come in? Savings, okay.
Correct.
So it went down from three hundred and twenty-five thousand last year to a hundred and twenty thousand this year?
Correct, because we're basically fronting the cost for the purchase in fiscal twenty, so that's not a cost that we have to carry into twenty-one. So you are gonna see that number be um, significantly lower for the next three years than in year four. Um, we'll have to start adding some cost back in. We may have to replace some machines, but minimally, we're gonna have to pay for the service associated with them.
These machines that include scanners, since we have more and more um,
They do, so the.
Ability to do without paper.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so.
Everybody can tell I love paper.
Everyone still has paper, right now. There, it's a photocopier. Um, they have scanning capability, so we can scan to our email. We can, we use a lot of Google, so we can scan directly to um, Google if we want to from the machines. Um, they also have what we call kind of like follow me printing, so this actually minimizes uh, paper. So if I, my computer wanted to print a document, um, yeah, I can technically go to any photocopier in the district and just log in uh, as myself and print the document directly to me. Um, so again, it just kind of cuts down on wasted paper. But if, you know, if anyone happens to be at a different school and they need to print a document, they can um, do that right on the, on the network. So it's, it's, it, PaperCut is the system that we're using. It's um, pretty nice. It's a nice feature.
Any other questions on this page? John?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of three hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred dollars on page twenty of the budget book. Function twelve-thirty, district wide.
Second? Alright, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna? John? Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, moving right along, page twenty-one, uh, business and finance. Any questions on this particular page? Joanna left when we get to business finance.
I asked her just to go get a couple of other budget books.
Okay, um, if there are no questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of four hundred nine thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars on page twenty-one. Um, of the budget book function fourteen-ten, business and finance.
Second?
Okay, John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to page twenty-two, human resources. Any questions on this particular page?
What would be the contracted services for this one?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yep, so the contracted services for this one, in the note section, I just mentioned that um, uh, from time to time, we have to um, provide staff some uh, commendations um, to be able to return to work if they have a particular uh, need. So we did include some funding a couple of years back that we've been carrying for that. Um, and then we're also looking to upgrade some of our um, internal systems that we use, say, school spring for hiring and whatnot. So there's uh, money in here also to work with that company um, to help us with that upgrade.
Okay.
So that would fall into contracted services.
So it's like recruiting software, that type of thing?
Well, it's a particular software system that we use for like application processing, uh, but there's an upgrade that's necessary, so we're gonna be going through that upgrade.
Okay.
When you and I spoke, there were some specific things you were gonna check on with regards to other expenses for me.
Yeah, can we wait till Joanna gets back?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, yeah, there were, there were some items, um, particularly within the line and Joanna will know them off the top of her head.
Since we're waiting, uh, the school spring, you know, during negotiations, we did talk about changes, asking for change in the school spring to make things easier. On our end, are, are we getting any response from them?
Um, yeah, that's something that obviously we can uh, work on. We can give you a report on as well. From time to time, that any of the different software companies that we use will do different updates. They'll offer different functionality that might come out. Um, so we're working that through now. When we're in negotiations, we talked about um, you know, being able to add functionality that would signify if someone was an internal candidate from a job or an external candidate, so that's what we're working through now. And we're actually just internally starting our um, hiring uh, processes. It's that time of year that we're starting to do our in-building transfers. We're gonna be moving to our district transfer round by about the middle of um, March. And then obviously, we're gonna be mov- moving towards like external hiring uh, after we're done that later this spring, so. Um, yes, this will get that all, all updated.
Alright, any other questions on this?
Just that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna table that one and come back to it?
You wanna come back to twenty-two?
Sure. Why don't we, I'll just earmark that one. So we'll move to page twenty-three for now, uh, which is legal service and settlements. Any questions on this particular page? Everybody good? Okay, John?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one hundred forty thousand dollars on page twenty-three of the budget book function fourteen-thirty to fourteen-thirty-five, legal service and settlements. Is that dash a range or is it two numbers?
Uh, it's, it's, it's a range, fourteen-thirty to fourteen-thirty-five.
Yeah.
Second?
Second, okay. Any questions on that other page, this page? Okay, John?
Uh, aye, you see.
Maria?
Aye.
Gonna keep you all awake tonight. Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, Joanna's back. We wanna go back.
Joanna, can you help us?
Page twenty-two?
On page twenty-two, I remember I asked you about um, what were some of the uh, things that were listed on the other services, or I'm sorry, other expenses in the um, the human resources office?
Sure. Um, professional development expenses, uh, professional development books, uh, professional association and conference dues. Uh, monitor or display for the office of HR and necessary hardware. Those are the main, well, for other.
Right.
Yep.
Questions on that? Ask Donna?
No, also, thanks.
Alright, any other questions on um, human resources? Okay.
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of three hundred ten thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars on page twenty-two of the budget book function fourteen-twenty, human resources.
Second?
Okay, Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
John?
Aye. Aye.
It's not cool.
Alright, so now we're at page twenty-four, which is district wide MIS. Any questions?
I'm gonna have the same question here. Is eighty thousand in contracted services? Um, what is that usually for?
That pays for our annual um, support contracts, like that we would have, say, here at central offices where we maintain all of our servers and networking equipment.
Those are contracted out?
Well, no, the service would be. So we would have like a, a company on call in the event uh, something ever went down. Um, our staff do the day-to-day, excuse me again, day-to-day work on the system, but if that ever went down, we have a contract for that. This went up a little bit because we actually uh, had to increase our contract on the um, the security uh, upgrades that we did last year. Because now, you know, when we installed them in year one at the two middle schools, it was uncovered as part of the purchase. But now going into year two, some of the reason that that cost has gone up a little bit is because we need to add the service contracts on all of the uh, camera service. Uh, just to make sure that they're backed up and in the event anything ever went down, we'd have a company be able to come out and help us. So that's, that's contracted.
Does any of it have to do with the one-on-one program at all? Is that different?
Not in the contracted services, no. That was basically the, that was like a, a one-out buy. Um, and we actually really, Bill Will, when he does his report for us, we've been um, very happy with the fact that um, the devices really are um, staying current. We're not having a lot of breaks. Um, our own technicians have been able to do most of the break fix in-house. Um, so no, we haven't had any issues with that. And we've used uh, school choice money uh, to be able to fund that whole initiative.
Alright, any other questions on this particular page?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one million three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, three, I'm sorry. One million three hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars on page twenty-four of the budget book. Function fourteen-fifty, district wide, miss.
Second?
Okay, any other, any other questions? Isn't this what you do for a living?
IT, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, page twenty-five, Curriculum Directors. Questions? Stipend, curriculum stipends went down?
Yeah, well, we used to have a stipend for, I believe it was one of the teachers that stepped up when we didn't have a World Languages Coordinator. So when we reinstated the World Language Coordinator position, we don't have that stipend any further.
And what are the contracted services on this one?
Oh, I didn't know who was talking. You know, that, for the contracted services, that's for outside service providers to provide PD.
Such as?
Alice training?
Yep, we have, yeah, I, I budget for the Alice training, so for the teachers to go and go online, to be able to take their Alice piece. What else do I put underneath there?
Alice is the biggest one.
Yeah, because that takes up the most of it. And it's just to provide other PD providers that we need as they go along. So if they had to bring somebody in for a specific professional development, there's monies for that. I think that Alice takes up the bulk of it.
Now, do you have to recertify every year in that?
Every year, they have to, teachers have to go online. So there was the Alice one training, then there was the Alice two, and then they'll go on and continue with the Alice training every year to get recertified.
We pay like so much. We have Alice trainers too.
Yeah.
We have Alice trainers.
Well, we're, we're in district trainers,
Okay.
but they have to do that online piece to get that certification each year when they do their sign-offs for, you know, ethics, all of that. That's one of the pieces that they have to do.
The Secretary for Curriculum Coordinators is shared by everyone?
No, there's a, that's my department coordinator, but there's one, there's, I have one in my budget, but then she's shared with the other ten of them. So that's Martha. She's with ten different coordinators.
Okay, but under your budget item, there is already a secretary?
Right, so then Martha is for the rest of the coordinators.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we are saying, this one individual at the high school basically serves as the secretary for all the coordinators.
Right.
They don't have each, they, they all share one. They don't each have their own.
Right.
This person is positioned at the high school.
For all of them.
For all of them, correct.
And under yours is your assistant.
Yep, and then she picks up for, she also assists, but.
Any other questions on this page?
Joanna, did you happen to know the number of months?
I'd have to go on to look at the ledger and I-
Just about, yeah.
The Alice is like close to thirty thousand. And then the other five is just, like Linda said, items that if she wants to have another professional development provider come in, that like wouldn't fall under the Title II A grant where she funds all the professional development in case there's a need in the district.
Okay.
The significant piece of this is Alice.
Yeah, so I guess it's just a way to put it somewhere, because isn't Alice security and?
But this is the training component of it.
For the teachers.
This isn't, correct.
For the coordinators or just?
Anything that goes to, for professional development, whether it be for admin or teachers, the bulk of it goes to teachers.
Not just for coordinators.
And I think the confusing part is contracted services, meaning we're contracting out for somebody to provide us with the PD service.
Okay, not just for coordinators though?
No, 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 this would be for the whole district.
Anything else?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of $1,285,956 on page twenty-five of the Budget Book, Function twenty-one ten Curriculum Directors.
Second.
Questions? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, page twenty-six, Curriculum Directors, Special Education. Any questions here?
Just one comment. So the PAC expenses, in that CPAC, were seven fifty. I think in a document that we had received from them on February third, they were asking for twelve hundred, but in speaking with Dr. Lang, most of that cost was for speakers, so I think that we're going to, they're going to reach out to the Special Education Department, in particular Amy Reese, to see if we can use maybe some grant money to cover some of the cost of that, so. That will help.
If, if there are like speakers or things like that, I did speak with Amy about it. And we have in the past worked with them to fund extra groups that want to come in. So there's sufficient funds, particularly within the grants,
Right.
that could pay for that, so we'll work with them again.
Yeah, because I think the bulk of that twelve hundred that they were looking for was actually for speakers. And they've had some very good speakers then, so.
So that, what's in there now supplies for what they?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, I think that they're doing a presentation in March, so.
Yeah, they're coming here for their presentation, but, no, we'll work with them if there's a need or some kind of a speaker series that needs funding.
I know they need some materials for the Zen Dens. I know that they always have those set up at each activity. And they've been, I think largely supplying that with their own funds. So we can free up a little bit of the money by providing them with speakers, grant money for speakers. I think that will allow them to be able to buy some supplies for the Zen Den and whatnot.
So, one of the things I noticed in this particular budget item, and maybe it's just because historically I haven't been here, but if you could just tell me, this is an increase of well over, okay, between actual two thousand and eighteen to your projected twenty twenty-one, we're looking at close to three hundred thousand dollar increase. Right, from six eleven three four four to eight ninety-one four four one?
You're looking at the, back in two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah. Yes.
Correct.
So if we look at this, that's the increase. Now, this doesn't include all the new positions we're talking about and so on.
The new positions in, see, this does include new positions that were added since two thousand and eighteen on this page.
It does.
Yes, we, we added two special ed chairs.
All right.
But what you're, they were actually here for fiscal twenty, so they're included in the nine. I believe if you look back at the fiscal eighteen budget, there would have only been seven people on this page. So you actually have two additional people being listed.
So it's those positions?
Correct. But then in the subsequent pages of the budget, when we get more of the teacher pages, is where you're going to see the additional special ed staff.
Okay.
It looks like there was an assistant director added two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, and there's a a good chunk of it right there, too.
It's substantial.
Yeah.
But it, it's not that the, it's substantial because we added positions.
Right.
It's not the positions we had, correct.
But it's not the new positions that are coming up.
No, the new positions are in the, the teaching pages of the budget, a little bit later.
Now, what, the increase in the dues and other, what's?
Yeah, so, I mean, that is largely based on increases in staff. So just based on the couple of additional staff that we have, memberships to some of the organizations that they belong to going up. And then also, again, because we're, now that we've had them on, on board, you're going to see a couple of corrections. So if you look at like the fiscal two thousand and nineteen fund, say even just for travel, you can see that we were actually trending a little bit high, fifty-five hundred, sixty-four hundred. Yet our budget had been low. Even last year, it was three. We're trying to make a correction to be more in line with the actuals in this particular year. And similar to the, the dues and subscriptions, we're just seeing that that is going up now because of the extra staff that we have. So when your actuals come in for this year, they'll be a little bit higher than anticipated.
Okay, just, so I clarify this. The special education administrative chairperson is one person, one position?
Which one are you talking about?
This, I'm still on page twenty-six. The fourth line down?
Yep.
That is one position?
No, that's four people.
Four people, okay.
You're looking at the-
So it's not a chairperson, it's chairpeople. That's four of them?
Right, the second column to the left says, like, full position equivalent. So that's a four. So it's four people, four people at the four twenty-one.
Okay, other questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of $891,441 on page twenty-six of the Budget Book, Function twenty-one ten Curriculum Directors, Special Education.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, page twenty-seven, School Leadership.
Good luck with the game. Thank you.
Any questions on page twenty-seven? This is on principals, assistant principals, deans, all that stuff. Good?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of $2,745,000, oh, man, $2,745,005 on page twenty-seven of the Budget Book, Function twenty-two ten School Leadership.
Second.
Any questions on it? Are you good?
I think I'm good.
Okay, all right. All right, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
You're contemplating, that's why I guess.
Yeah, I looked puzzled by a couple, but I'm okay now.
Okay. All right, page twenty-eight, Classroom Teachers, Regular Education. Questions?
One of my questions is on art. So I've been looking at, you know, just, it's generally decreasing on that budget. What's the reasoning on that one?
Yeah, so on this one, this is actually a correction. So last year when we were going, we're not cutting any art positions this year. It looks like that, because last year, when we were going through the budget book, we identified two or three positions, particularly at the high school, that based on numbers, we weren't going to fill, but we hadn't completed the enrollment process yet. So one of the positions that we ended up not filling for the current year is an art position. So it was left here. We also didn't fill, there were a couple of other subject area positions. We subsequently, during the course of this year, transferred those to kindergarten. Remember when we had some additional kindergarten classes? So we only transferred two positions to kindergarten. The third position that didn't get filled is still in the budget here. So you technically, we didn't reduce the FTE, so I didn't reduce it from the budget. We're basically making that correction. We have ten point four teachers now. We're going to have ten point four teachers again next year. It just says eleven point four because we didn't fill one of the current positions that we have budgeted.
Okay.
That make sense? But we're not making a cut in art. The same number of art teachers are employed next year as are now.
Okay.
I know it looks on paper like that, it's just because that's where we carried the, the extra position last year.
Donna?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering if we could just talk about page twenty-eight and twenty-nine together? Just because I think that they're, they're kind of linked, because I had some concerns about the numbers at the elementary school level, particularly in K one and two. And I know that we've done some things to be able to address that, but I was wondering if you could talk about that a little bit?
Sure, we do then have to just go back and still vote.
Yes, yes.
Each page individually. So these are big pages of the budget for us. Obviously, twenty-eight is close to three hundred staff members. This is a lot of our teaching staff in the district. We break them down by grade level. Obviously, elementary teachers are all lumped up into one category called elementary. That goes right through sixth grade. When you get to seventh and eighth grade, and then the high school, people are broken down by subject level. So that's why you have those breakdowns at that level. One of the things that we did include in the budget, again, you're not going to see it on this page because this is regular ed, but you'll see it when we get to the instructional special ed page, is the additional special ed teachers. But on page twenty-nine, you will see the increase in the tutoring line. So this was something that, again, we talked a little bit about either the last meeting or the meeting before, where we currently are grant-dependent to provide interventionists at our, our various schools. So this year, we were talking a little bit about the elementary level. We have four interventionists, you know, ELA reading math at the Biim, the Center, EMV, Harrington Elementary Schools. But because South Road didn't qualify based on the Title I funding, they didn't have any interventionists. So one of the things, this is just the example, one of the things that we want to be able to do is provide some continuity year to year so that the schools can actually plan accordingly and provide that pull-out instruction or push in the extra interventionist-type positions. In the local, we want to have a differentiation between the local budget and the grants. So although you can think of a position as providing the same level of support, on the grants, they're going to be listed as interventionists. On the local budget, they're going to be listed as tutors. But what I included in the page twenty-nine in the tutoring account is basically enough funding is if our grants come in next year, similar to what we received this year, this will basically be able to provide the other elementary schools, say South Road in this particular case, and even Parker and McCarthy Middle School, with four dedicated tutors or interventionists that they can actually build into their instructional model. So when they're talking about putting groups together, again, we get from kind of tier one to tier two interventions and supports that we want to be able to provide. They're going to be able to count on that for day one, and we're not going to be so grant-dependent. In the event, in the long run, let's say grants ever fluctuated again, you know, they went down across the district, this would be an area that I would come to you with and actually request some funding be put in, because I think these positions really provide a lot of flexibility within the schools. They're flexible to be able to go into different grade-level classrooms, to be able to help out with, again, an ELA block, a literacy block, a math block. Oftentimes, and I think if we actually do this early enough, this was a model, you know, that Lowell actually uses quite efficiently, you're able to actually attract some very qualified people for these jobs. Oftentimes even, say, recently retired teachers who are excellent instructors like to come back to work part-time. And, you know, these are basically part-time positions, so they're not adding to our budget as far as benefits go. Typically, these individuals, if they're retired, they come back, they already have benefits. But they're able to go into schools for, you know, two, three hours a day and provide direct services to students, you know, helping teachers with, kind of breaking out kids in instruction. So I think this is really actually going to be very beneficial, particularly because we're not going to be so grant-dependent. And we're going to be able to actually plan accordingly, get our hiring done earlier in the springtime, and then that's going to ultimately help us come the fall. So these, these do overlap a little bit. But again, because you have classroom teachers on page twenty-eight, twenty-nine differentiates for reporting purposes,
Right.
what we call specialists. You know, they're not classroom teachers.
And that's not special education, that's general education.
Correct. The special ed will come a little bit later.
Right. All right, so here's my concern, and you and I have already talked about this, but just keeping an eye on those elementary numbers, particularly at, at the younger ages. I want to make sure that, I mean, I think that the teachers, you know, the num, I mean, the numbers are up there, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three kids. You're doing, you know, you're eye-ready, you're doing, you know, all of these other things, plus managing students on an IEP in your classroom, the SEL, the PBIS, I mean, there's just so many things. I think we need to keep an eye on that. I think we have to be realistic. We don't have a lot of space in these schools. Okay, so I think that we need to be creative about how it is that we can provide support to the elementary teachers to make sure that they can, you know, get these kids off to a good start. You know, I think it's really key. I mean, identifying the problems early, providing the intervention, getting them off to a good start that's going to help them, you know, later on when they're feeling motivated and optimistic and, you know, the social issues, getting those addressed at an early age, that maybe prevents some problems later on. I don't know that I have a specific solution, but I do think it, it does bear watching as we go on. Are we doing enough to be able to support the teachers in the classroom to, to take care of all of these things that we're asking them to take care of?
When we, I, I don't, I just, I agree with you. I don't disagree. When we were putting the budget together, one of the things we, we mentioned when we talked is that we don't know what's happening with fully the kindergarten registration right now because it's ongoing. So we had a session in January, we're going to have a session later in the spring. The numbers are certainly on the high end. Now, we don't know if maybe people just came out in January, they're not going to come out in April, but we have to let that process play out. We have basically staffed each of our elementary schools with four kindergarten classrooms at this point. But in the budget, I do have a set aside for two additional kindergarten teachers. I just can't tell you at this point in time where it would make the most sense for them to go until we actually have the final enrollments done. You know, we want to have very desirable numbers in those grade levels. And if you look on page seventy-two, where we had done the, the projection for next year, obviously K is blank because we don't know what the K numbers are going to be yet. But we're, our target, you know, for that grade level is obviously as close to twenty as we can. What we're seeing is as we're moving up from kindergarten to grade one, again, we just have to base it on current kids in classrooms. But you're seeing, you know, average class sizes of, you know, twenty, twenty-two, nineteen point four, twenty-one point two-five. I honestly don't think we can do much better than that, given our, our, obviously, budget realities, but also space. And we talked about this as well, within the buildings, any of those, you know, there are now nine of those kind of yellow classrooms, those are what we term bubble classrooms. So those are grade levels that basically have a fifth section. And typically, across all of our elementary schools, we're set up for four sections, or four strands in each of our schools, so that we have four sections of K, four sections of one, four sections of two. But because of the number and the fact that we enroll by neighborhood, we don't enroll district-wide. Uh, basically, we have, and I've recommended adding these bubble classrooms or extra classrooms in each of these nine areas. So, this is actually an increase over last year of an extra bubble classroom. Um, which, and the extra one is actually, obviously, if you had a bubble this year, the bubble moves up to the next year. But adding one at Center School in the fourth grade, um, to try to bring that hundred-and-five number, uh, down to, to closer to twenty to start. So, we really have been very conscious of that. I don't want you to think that we're not. We're trying to make those numbers as reasonable as possible. Space is certainly an issue as well as, um, you know, finances. But, um, we're, we're watching it. And if we ever saw a number really start to creep up, and I've done this before, I've come to you and say, I really recommend an extra classroom, even though we've only budgeted for two additional kindergarten classrooms. If those numbers creep up and we need to add a third, I would come to you and say that. And we would find, um, uh, flexibility of money within the budget. I would prioritize that over something else to get done. We'd have that conversation. I wouldn't let it go undone. And, uh, we talk about it.
So, I think, um, the only thing I wanna reiterate is I do think we have to keep an eye on the numbers. I think we have to be talking to the teachers and just making sure that, you know, as I said, that what we're asking to do is doable in a way that allows kids to get the intervention that they need in early age to prevent problems later on, that we're attending to that social-emotional learning piece, which I think will prevent problems later on, um, and that we're getting kids off to a good start. And as I said, I'm, I agree with you. I think space is very tight at the elementary level. But, you know, maybe with, um, working with the staff, um, and the administration of the buildings, we can be creative about how we can be looking at supporting them.
Can I return again to the, um, page twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, going to class numbers. I have heard some th, some reports of pretty large classes at the high school level, um, when it comes to art courses. So, I just really truly wanna understand, we are not in any way decreasing art n, teachers?
No, we, we employ ten point four now.
And we're gonna keep employing ten point four. So, that eleven point four came from what?
Last year, when we went through the budget to approve the budget, there were, um, three extra positions at the high school that we basically said, based on the number of kids that were going into the high school, we knew we could make some reductions. We didn't know which positions were gonna be reduced because we hadn't finished the enrollment for students for the spring. So, we basically built the budget with, um, three positions less at the high school than we knew we were going to find.
Okay.
Okay, so, we ended up, I believe, one ended up being, uh, math, and I forget the other subject area, but basically, we had an extra position in the budget that was unfilled. During this fall, I came to you because we ended up having higher, um, kindergarten registrations than we thought, and we added two kindergarten teachers. So, we moved two of those positions that were in the budget that were unfilled to kindergarten. So, that's why you see that the kindergarten numbers, uh, well, you actually, you don't see it because it would've said sixteen when we started the budget, but we added two, so it went to eighteen. What you're not seeing is the original starting point, you're seeing the amended budget for that column. We never amended the art teacher position. That's just an extra position that was sitting in the budget that was never filled because the enrollment didn't warrant it. But we're not making, so this, it's just kinda now being reflected, but we're not making any cuts to art. We only have ten point four now, and we're gonna continue with ten point four next year.
Okay, 'cause I, I think it's really, we can't rob one to put into the other, it's...
We're, no, we're not.
All levels are important here.
Every single one is, but we're not making that cut.
And I agree one hundred percent. We need to give them a good start and do all those things. But I have heard of numbers like twenty-eight, twenty-nine in an art class.
I have not.
Well, one particular music class, okay. So, I think we need to, we need to honestly...
That's a separate category though, right? Music is not under arts.
Music is separate.
Alright, this is, never mind.
I was gonna say.
But you very well...
I'm gonna go beyond this, and, and, but I think we, we have to, and I know you present this with actual numbers at some point for the high school. It's a little more difficult to determine that right now because they're in the process of signing up for cla, courses and so on. But, um, that's something I'm watching carefully because that is something that has been pointed out to me a couple of times.
Yeah, the, the only thing I will say, the band, obviously, ha-
It's not band.
Alright, but the band has more kids in it because the band is bigger than a regular classroom. But we'll, I'll produce that for you again.
I know how many people are in band, I can see it.
I will produce that for you again this spring, as soon as we're done the registration process. So, once the kids enroll for the spring, we would make adjustments if we need to.
Alright.
Okay.
Donna?
Just to clarify for people at home, we've, we're, when we're talking about arts, we're not talking about fine arts, and under the umbrella of that is all our art and music and classes. We separated art and music, another category.
Yeah, it's fine and performing arts, but it's art and music.
Right.
We have ten point four art teachers. If you go down a few lines, we have fourteen point five music teachers.
Yes.
It's separate.
Right, it's separate. I just wanna make sure that people at home could understand that.
Yes, my comment about the numbers i, impacts any area, uh, you know, of the fine arts, so, that's fine. But I, I do know, I do know that.
And on the world language, that extra position is the addition of ASL?
It's the addition of the ASL.
That's gonna be the new program next year and...
That's what we're gonna try, yeah. And again, on that one, we just don't fully know where it's gonna go. So, uh, what we anticipate, again, is the kids deciding to sign up at the high school level, we'd hope to be able to support, you know, two, maybe three classes. But we also know, we can't at the middle school level only continue to offer French and Spanish and then assume or think kids are gonna switch to a different language when they hit high school. So, we have budgeted a full-time position, but some of those, uh, teaching duties may need to be at Parker and McCarthy to start letting kids know about ASL, um, some kind of survey-type course, so we're still working on that. Um, so I don't a hundred percent know where it's gonna land, uh, until we're done all the course enrollments. But I put in a full-time position so that we could have one point oh, we could have five courses between the three schools.
Okay, any other questions on page twenty-eight?
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of twenty-three million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred sixty dollars on page twenty-eight. Function twenty-three hundred to twenty-three oh five, classroom teachers, regular education.
Second.
Any questions? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page twenty-nine, teacher specialists for reg, regular education. Any questions? I think we answered some of them already with the tutoring. And that tutoring will help those teachers that Donna mentioned down in the elementary schools.
The interventionists, do we have to wait in, till hire in the fall, or are they hired in the spring pending appro, uh, pending, um...
We typically hold off on the interventions just until we hear about the grant awards. Once we know about the grant money, we can move forward.
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of one million, eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty dollars on page twenty-nine of the budget book, function twenty-three-ten, teacher specialist, regular education.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page thirty, teacher specialist, special education. This is where we've had some additions, right?
Correct. So, on this page of the budget, um, this is where we've accounted for two additional BCBA positions. Um, one would be a position split between, uh, Harrington Elementary School and Center Elementary School, um, to provide additional supports to not only students, but to be able to work in and with teachers around, um, students and behaviors and, uh, therapies and whatnot. And we also have a separate, uh, second BCBA position, um, to start to grow a strive program, uh, at the middle school level. So, this is a kind of a takeoff on the elementary-level strive program. We now have students that are graduating up to the middle school level, and we wanna make sure that we're properly supporting them as they get into the middle school level. So, that's the second, uh, BCBA position. And then here, you also have, uh, four additional, um, special education, uh, teacher positions. Three are at the elementary level, um, one at Biim, one at Harrington, one at, uh, Center Elementary School. And then one additional position at, uh, McCarthy, again, for that, uh, strive program. Um, so those are the, the teaching positions that would be, uh, added here. A lot of this is to do with, um, um, course ratios, class ratios, particularly around, uh, special ed needs and IEPs. Um, I think this'll go a long way to, um, like, obviously, supporting those students, but also, even with some of our, um, models within the schools, we currently have, um, a setup where we have five grade levels. Again, we have K through four. But typically, uh, aside from special programs, we have four special educators in an elementary school. So, this is gonna actually allow us to have an extra special educator or one per grade level in each of the elementary schools, and I think that will be a welcome addition.
And this is not for substantially separate programming, this is for
Correct.
programming for kids on IEPs.
Correct.
Except for the strive one, right?
Well, yeah, the strive one at McCarthy. It's a special program. The three at the elementary are, um, general special ed teachers.
Okay, other questions on page thirty?
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of six million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars on page thirty of the budget book, twenty-three-ten, teacher specialist, special education.
Second.
Okay. Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
I should've brought my reading glasses.
It's small, it's small.
Page thirty-one, uh, medical therapeutic services. Any questions on this particular one? So, this is just therapists, right? OTs, PTs?
Excuse me, OTPs.
Questions?
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars on page thirty-one of the budget book, function twenty-three-twenty, medical therapeutic services.
Second.
Quiet, any questions? Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff, again, didn't you? Donna?
Yes, it's aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
We're never gonna make this one long. Okay, uh, page thirty-two, substitutes.
Yeah, so these are, yeah, these are, um, kinda line item appropriations. They're not tied to, excuse me, a particular person, they're daily rates. But you'll notice within the, um, day-to-day teacher substitute account, uh, we have included sufficient funds to be able to increase our, uh, daily rate from seventy-five to ninety, which, again, I reported at the last meeting, I think will help make us a little bit more competitive with neighboring towns, um, hopefully help with our, uh, fill rates. There is a report at the back of the budget book that talks about the rationale for that. Um, this evening, you would just be appropriating the money to that line item. Uh, after the budget's done, you would actually be, uh, in a separate vote at a separate meeting, approving the new rate structure. Um, so you'd take a separate vote on that. We're just trying to put sufficient funds in the account now to be able to pay for it.
And how was our fill rate?
Uh, it was in the report.
Oh, is it?
Um, it's, it's not that we're, um, uh, doing poorly, but we certainly have some unfilled positions each day. Uh, not only us, all districts in the area are kinda struggling with this. I think a lot of it is, um, the economy's actually, uh, very good, it's hard to attract, uh, subs. But, um, when Cheryl had done an analysis on this, you know, technically, I think we could've gone from seventy-five to eighty-five, um, to then kinda move from the near bottom of the list to the closer to the top. But, uh, we also wanna, uh, keep maintaining where minimum wage is going and not have to, uh, keep making this change every year. And we'd like to get out ahead of it, uh, and by adding the extra five dollars gets us to ninety, to, I think, make us one of the top two or three districts in the area, uh, rate-wise. So, if we can actually move in now, try to attract some subs, show them this is a, um, a good place to work, then we can hopefully retain them as other districts start to creep closer to ninety. Um, so there was some thought behind that. And I think the numbers, again, in the report will, uh, will be in that for you.
Any questions?
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget number of five hundred ninety thousand dollars on page seven. Oh, nope, that's page thirty-two of the budget book, function twenty-three-twenty-five, substitutes.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page thirty-three, paraprofessionals. Any questions here? Status quo for the most part, those numbers?
Um, yeah, for the most part. The, um, the local operating budget has been pretty consistent when it comes to recess aids and paraprofessionals. If we've had to add them during the year, typically, the grant has helped out with that, uh, front. So, this is basically just updating, uh, salaries to be in accordance with the new collective bargaining agreements. Um, but the number of positions is, um, consistent year over year.
Any questions, Donna?
Uh, just one on the lunch and recess aids. You know, again, I think it just bears watching, especially where we have such a focus on the social-emotional learning. You know, you've got many kids out there and, you know, um, some adult supervision, but I think, you know, we wanna make sure that it's a, an opportunity for kids to be able to work on some of these skills. So, just keeping an eye on the staffing, same thing with the lunchroom. You know, um, we don't want any more penny challenges or anything in the cafeteria, so, whatever we can do, I think, to, uh...
What?
Penny challenges.
What's that?
It's when you stick something in that.
With the, the charger, you drop the penny in it, like Westford.
I don't think we had that.
We didn't have that, that's Westford. In any case, uh, just, you know, to make sure that it's safe. You know, if there was ever an emergency, we had a lot, we wanna make sure we have enough adults there to be able to support the kids.
We had actually added, um, particularly at the elementary level, a couple of recess aids per school two years back. Um, but it, it certainly is something we'll watch.
Alright.
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of four million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars on page thirty-three of the budget book, function twenty-three-thirty, para, paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals, that's it, that's the end.
Alright, seconds, second. Okay, any other questions? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page thirty-four, media slash, uh, library slash media center.
Yep, and on this page, you'll notice, um, two additional positions at the, uh, each middle school, one per school. Um, and this is something I talked about at the, um, meeting at the last time, we're kinda forecasting additional support and services for our, um, technology rollout in the district. Our one-on-one initiative will now be going into grades five and six, grades, uh, nine and ten at the high school. Um, and one of the things that we really wanna be able to do is, um, free up our two ITSs who are at the, um, the middle schools now, um, to not have to basically, uh, be in classes for a significant point of the day, but to be able to go out and actually work directly with, um, teachers, help, help teachers, support teachers, work with kids in the, uh, schools. So, on this particular page of the budget, um, you see the increase at the middle school level of two technology assistants so that these individuals can actually, um, man the computer labs, uh, because that's still part of our schedule. They can, um, the ITSs will be able to help them, uh, particularly transition because they were in that role previously. But this will free them, uh, the ITSs up to really, uh, do more building-wide, um, support of the instructional, uh, technology initiatives in the school.
What is ITS, just?
Um, um, that's what I call it, instructional tech, uh, specialist. What, what do they call them here?
TISs.
Oh, technology instruction specialist. It's, um, like the, uh, computer teacher. Uh, computer facilitator in the buildings. Um, Debbie at McCarthy, and it was Ian at, um, Parker. So that they would be able to not, uh, be tied to a classroom, but be able to go out and actually, uh, help other teachers in classrooms.
Alright, any questions?
I move that we approve the bottom-line budget figure of seven hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars on page thirty-four of the budget book, function twenty-three- forty, library media center.
Second.
Okay, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page thirty-five, professional development. Uh, questions?
So, mentor stipends is stipends to teachers who become mentors to other teachers?
Correct.
Okay.
And are we assuming, are we thinking there's gonna be more mentors this year? I don't know, it's just, it went, it was at thirty-five, then it was twenty, then it was twenty-eight to thirty-five.
It really just depends on, on how many, um, new staff you welcome into the district, what kind of experiences that they're coming in with. Um, but based on next year's, uh, projection of new staff coming into the district, where they're going to be, um, yes, we're thinking the thirty-five is more accurate.
Do you have a lot of retirements?
Uh... Eleven?
Eleven, okay, alright.
Eleven retirements.
Alright, that makes sense.
Is there a mentor coordinator? How does that work?
There is. There, there's a, there's a mentor coordinator. Um, it's one of the teachers, and they work with, um, training the new, any teachers that haven't gone through the course. And they also can help troubleshoot, they meet, um, at different parts of the school year to make sure that, you know, what does it look like, you know, in the fall, s, winter, spring? They bring the mentors in, they, they go and watch each other teach.
Okay.
Sometimes, um, we find that it's a teacher that may not be new to the district. However, they've changed their roles, we might provide them with a teacher mentor as well because they've changed their role so significantly in the district. And I'll make something so extreme, like going from kindergarten to grade twelve, which typically doesn't happen. However, that's an extreme role, so we would end up giving that teacher a mentor.
Do you find it easy, difficult to get mentors, or?
Um, it's typically okay, it's just that when it's something like very specialized, it gets a, it can be difficult because there's only so many people that do that role. So, you sometimes have to really, you know, recruit and find out, make sure that they've been trained. So you sometimes have to really, you know, recruit and find out, make sure that they've been trained, it's just, it's more, same with teachers, it's hard to find, you know, say, a physics teacher. It might be difficult, maybe we only have X amount of nurses, say, in the district, if you ended up having a lot more nurses coming, you only have so many bodies to work with.
Yeah, the other hot pot is just when you have like some singleton-type positions to find a support in their school. Oftentimes, like, let's say, on the nursing front, we only have one school that has multiple nurses, so you'd have to have, you know, a nurse from one school be a mentor to another one. So it's not always the easiest, but-
I think this is actually a very important program going forward, especially as we have the number of retirements and newer teachers coming in. So, of course, I have no objection to making sure that we have a good program going on, just want to make sure that it's efficient and that it really is addressing the needs of the staff. And, and I think, and I don't know how we're handling that, but in those specialized positions that you do have, I don't know if you're rotating those, or if you're, like, for example, if you have somebody who's, does everybody always teach AP, or does everybody always teach honors, or how, you know, we're probably rotating some of this within subjects, because of course, we can have disruptions, as we know. So hopefully, but mentoring those types of things is probably difficult. Do we ever reach out to other districts for mentoring?
Well, no, we would, we would keep that in district.
Keep everything in district.
And we, I mean, the teachers apply, the teachers are great, they, you know, they want to be able to support other teachers. So we typically do, like I said, don't run into a problem unless it is like the singleton or the cross-building piece, there's always usually somebody that can help out. It also depends on the person coming into the district, what their skill level is, they might not need necessarily content mentoring, but they might need more like classroom management mentoring, or, you know, working with others, that type of piece. So it all depends on who, we have to match the teacher, the teachers together based on the skill level.
Okay.
Other questions? Donna, you have a question?
No.
Just looking, quiz it up, okay?
No, I was just, actually, I was thinking, how many years do they spend in the, in the mentoring program, one, two, or three years? Meaning, the, the new teacher? They have to have fifty hours in year one, and then technically in year two, they're supposed to have another fifty hours, but that typically gets worked into, you know, the job in general, and what support they might need. Thank you. That's for certification.
All right, if there's nothing else, John?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars on page thirty-five of the Budget Book Function twenty-three fifty-seven, Professional Development.
Second.
Okay, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria? All right, page thirty-six, Textbooks and Instructional Materials.
Yep, this particular page is pretty consistent year over year, with the exception of the district-wide adoption. We talked about this too when we were putting the budget together, but we know that we need to recommend a new literacy program at the elementary level of the district. That's probably going to cost, in the ballpark of three-quarters of a billion dollars. In this particular line, we have included quarter million dollars to offset that. And then, as we get into the rest of fiscal year twenty, because we'll actually be purchasing the materials this spring to be able to start getting training lined up for over the summer, the fall. I'll be bringing a recommendation to use some one-time savings in the current fiscal twenty budget to offset that amount. But we wanted to at least put a good placeholder in there to be able to signal that that purchase is coming and is necessary for next year.
So, so this year, you're going to request an offset at the end of the year?
Yes, so one of the, like, you know how we do one-time spending?
Yes.
So we'll be recommending this spring, that some of the money that we have in the one-time category go toward this purchase. And then the balance will be the two-fifty in this budget. And we'll get a head start on some of the ordering this, this spring.
But you haven't identified that yet, where it's coming from, exactly.
What's that?
The, the rest of the money for the program, for the adoption?
No, but I mean, it'll be coming from the accounts that we have surfaced over the last couple of financial reports that we know are very favorable. So we'll be bringing that forward as a recommendation this spring.
And that, that's just now doing the pilot programs on these?
They're still doing that until the end of March, I believe.
Yeah, in the, beginning of April, yeah.
So at that point, probably around April vacation is when we'll have a better idea of kind of where teachers are leaning and what they're recommending. They'll work with Linda on that, we'll finalize quotes and a purchase, and we'll bring that to you.
This is all that phonics-based literacy?
Correct.
Other questions on this particular page?
The math and the science, that's for new programs, right, why this, the increase?
Well, no, that, well, that's part of the textbook, so they have to purchase new, like, consumables each year, or, you know, different materials that go with it. So that's why they have that in there, that's, they know what that's going to cost, that's separate from the adoption that we're talking about.
All right, thanks.
Science actually went down a little bit, because we've now purchased all of the FOS kits. We, in a couple of years, we really had to re, our social studies went up, but we had to really ramp, ramp up for the FOS purchase. But now we own the materials, so we just have to do the, the IDA consumables, as Linda mentioned.
Yeah, social studies, the social studies, they have new standards. And at the elementary level too, they're going to need some additional materials, as well as any of the other current courses that we have running, middle and high school. So we know, like, working with Stephanie, we know certain courses that are going to need like a re-up of some of their books.
That's what she told us when she met with us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But those new standards always come with something new.
Thanks.
When we say instructional materials, this includes digitized materials? Or only hard copied textbooks?
In, in like what way?
So if you have a textbook online that the student accesses, is that part of this?
Typically, that would be under the technology subscriptions, the technology account. This is more kind of paper purchases, workbooks, textbook, actual textbooks, textbooks and things like that.
Now that we have the one-on-one, are we starting to go to any digital?
Like total digital textbooks?
Yeah.
We have not yet.
Okay.
And I, I, I mean, we're certainly using a lot more materials, sharing resources digitally. I'm going to be interested to see what actually happens in that, even just within the whole textbook world, within the next number of years, because the prices for the digital copies are still actually very significant, so I don't know where that's going to go. But no, we haven't-
People get stuck with the license, that's the problem, it's a licensing issue, so you have a license for so long, but then once that license expires, to re-up the license is almost the same cost as the textbook, so you have, you know, you can't project out if you're going to be able to, you know, pay that, that kind of monies again. So you have to do a little combination between online access, as well as actual textbook access.
Wouldn't it make sense in some subjects, let's say, we had a presentation on psychology, where the textbook needs to be continuously updated to try to move into digital, which does update more often and so on, in some of your subject areas? So just thinking in terms of as we move forward, that would, because, you know, this is a substantial increase. Again, I love paper, but digital, I think, in some areas, does make sense.
Digital isn't what you think it is, it's, you're buying a digital copy of the book, so if they make a new version, they're going to pay, you pay again. It's not like they just update it, you know, no, no, no.
They, yeah, they don't-
Not for free.
They still want their money.
Not for free, exactly.
We have one-on-one, and we have digital books, and it's, yeah, especially when you get into the AP courses, it's as expensive, not more expensive than a hardcover, so.
It's not that we wouldn't look at it, it's off the table, it's just, it's not, the, the companies have not come out with that kind of-
It's not feasible, yeah.
-funding yet, or pricing structure, I guess, that makes it work.
All right, any other questions on page thirty-six?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of seven hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars on page thirty-six of the Budget Book Function twenty-four ten to twenty-four fifteen, Textbooks and Instructional Materials.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, page thirty-seven, Instructional Equipment. Any questions?
So I know the instrument repair is under the revolving account. Did we find out why there was not, nothing in, for music in this particular?
For, there was a request for music for like, under one-time purchases, new equipment. There was not a request under new equipment in the budget, in the operating budget. You'll likely see a recommendation for some one-time equipment purchases, music equipment purchases, instrument purchases, I'm sorry, through one-time money. But it did not come through the, the, this ask.
And the curriculum coordinator, didn't come through to you?
No.
Okay.
Can you just explain the, the decrease in the phys ed?
Yes, that one is noticeable. That's because, two years ago, the, the account actually went up pretty significantly, because we were paying for the fitness room at the high school to be redone. It was a two-year, basically, not a lease, but it, they, the, the company allowed us to spread the payment out over two years. So if you look at the actual in eighteen, you know, it was about twenty-five thousand dollars. We had to increase it significantly in nineteen to be able to pay for that. But next year, it's, it's all paid for, we have the new fitness room, we've, we've made the payment, and now we're able to go back to kind of regular spend, but that's why it went up.
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one hundred fifty-three thousand and fifty dollars on page thirty-seven of the Budget Book Function Code twenty-four twenty, Instructional Equipment.
Second.
Anybody else have any other questions before we? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Page thirty-eight, General Supplies. Any questions on this page?
Industrial Arts, that was in addition this, last year, right? Okay, we're, I'm good, I don't have a question.
Uh, yeah, we added that for the first time last year.
All right, anything else? Okay.
I just don't know, it's kind of out of, I don't know, it's just the categorization of it, forget it. Evaluation Special Education takes forty-two thousand five hundred dollars of supplies?
That would be your testing materials, right?
The testing, the testing kits.
Yeah, the kits are expensive.
Really?
Yeah, they're very expensive.
Gee, you would think it would cost more in foreign language. I'm sorry, it's pretty expensive.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of five hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars on page thirty-eight of the Budget Book Function twenty-four thirty, General Supplies.
Second.
Anything else? Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Okay, moving to page thirty-nine, Other Instructional Services, Special Education. Contracted services going down there, in particular?
No, this has been an account that, over the course of the year, sometimes the grants will pick up certain contracted services, depending on what's allowable, what's not allowable. You see, last year, we actually went up quite a bit, we shifted some of the costs to the local budget, as opposed to the grant. But no, just based on the number of kind of third-party providers we're working with this year, and the projections for next year, it's just projected to go down a little bit.
Crisis Interventionist CPI Training?
Correct.
And then the tutoring is for out of school?
Um, yes.
Other questions on this page?
I move that we approve the bottom line figure of one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars on page thirty-nine of the Budget Book Function twenty-four forty, Other Instructional Services, Special Education.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
We're in the forties. All right, page forty, Classroom Instructional Techno, Technology and Software.
Yep, so just want to bring your attention to the, you are going to see in the second line item, the cost for the one-on-one laptop initiative is increasing, because now we're going to be covering two additional grade levels. So next year, basically, half the district in grades five to twelve are going to have devices. But that cost is offset by the School Choice Revolving Fund, so that is in the budget. There is some additional software, under Instructional Software, software licensing fees and annual subscription fees, that are just per student, that are more expensive. So that's been included in the, the increase to three-fifteen.
Do you know what kind of software they, on the Chromebooks?
Oh, this isn't necessarily Chromebooks, but that would be like, say, like iReady, like assessment. No, the Chrome, I mean, they're primarily using, like, the Google Suite, the Google Classroom. There's not a significant cost for any software with the one-on-one initiative, these are like the other district software packages that we're using.
Other questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars on page forty of the Budget Book Function twenty-four fifty-one to twenty-four fifty-five, Classroom Instructional Technology and Software.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Forty-one, Guidance in Psychological Services.
Uh, thank you, on this page, the, the only noticeable increase you'll see is the addition of a psychologist position. And this is actually to be split between Parker and McCarthy Middle School. And we, again, we talked about this when we did the budget overview, but when you'll take a look at our staff to student ratios, at the middle school level in particular, they're a little bit out of skew with the rest of the district. At the elementary school level, we currently have a full-time psychologist in each of our elementary schools that services four hundred and fifty to, you know, five hundred or so students. At the middle school level, we have two that bridge both buildings, and, you know, that's about fifteen hundred students, which is significantly higher. And then when we get to the high school level, we have the house model, so we actually have one per house, or one, two, almost about, you know, five hundred or so students. So we're looking to add an additional psychologist to the two middle schools, it'll be split between the two. We also know that the Strive program that's going up to McCarthy is going to need some additional supports. So between this half position for McCarthy, and basically Dr. Steve, who's at McCarthy, they'll figure out who will be the, the better resource, or the best resource for that new Strive particular program. But that's the significant increase on this page, but I think the numbers certainly warrant it, and the demands on the service level of students certainly warrant it as well.
Questions on this page? Now, we did add the social worker last year, is any thought towards expanding that, or we see a need to expand that in the future, or?
I think the role has actually gone over very well, it's been very well subscribed, and I, I think we did a report in December that just talked about the first few months on the job. At this point in time, that's kind of part of the whole staffing model, so even though they have a social worker and two school counselors at Parker, McCarthy is still employing the model of three school counselors. So the three-to-three FTE is consistent, it's just a different provider at one of the schools providing it. I think certainly we'll want to get through the year and continue to see how it goes, I'm very encouraged with, with that particular model. But I'm not really ready to recommend any kind of change to the existing positions that we have. But looking forward in the future, yes, I could see that being something that we look to, to add at different levels of the district.
Anything else?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of two million three hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred and one dollars on page forty-one of the Budget Book Function twenty-seven ten to twenty-eight hundred, Guidance in Psychological Services.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, page forty-two, Medical and Health Services.
Yes, a couple of additions on this particular page of the budget. So one, again, we talked about when we did the budget overview, is a recommendation to add a LPN position at the high school. So we currently have two full-time RNs, or registered nurses at the high school. And again, to be a little bit more in line with our staffing model in the district, I know the high school nursing staff have talked over the last couple of years about being difficult, just with the extra kind of paperwork demands that we have around field trip approvals and athletics, having to verify records and whatnot. And again, if you think about it, at the middle school level, we have a full-time RN in each building and an LPN. But then when you go up to the high school, with just the two RNs, they actually don't have the same service level for about the same number of kids as we do at the high school. So this is a request we've actually talked about for over a year at this point in time. I think it's, it's worthwhile and, and worth doing, but this would add a, an LPN position at the high school, which is a point-seven position, to help them, again, student-staff ratio-wise. In addition to that, one of the, we, we mentioned earlier, increasing the sub-rate for teachers, it's also very difficult to get substitutes for school nurses. So again, to be a little bit more competitive with our neighboring communities and, and the substitute nursing market, we're recommending an increase, and I've included funding in this budget, to allow us to go from a hundred and thirty a day to a hundred and fifty a day for substitute nurses, to again, try to be, make it a little bit more encouraging to, to fill openings when we have them. So those are the two big additions for this page of the budget.
Questions? The new stipend, new item there, school nurses stipends?
Oh, that was something that came, Peggy, our nurse coordinator, had asked for, a small line item in the budget to be able to pay for, if they have to stipend a nurse to do like outside-of-work trainings or meetings, to be able to compensate them for that. So that would basically be a stipend that you'd be able to, say, pay a nurse if they had to attend something off, off work hours, or after work hours. It's not a one, a stipend being paid to any particular person.
Okay, all right.
It's like a pool of money that they would be able to access. We have a contracted rate, I think it's thirty or thirty-five dollars an hour, that you can pay someone for out-of-work activity. It would be a pool to be able to allow them to do that.
All right.
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of eight hundred forty-three thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars on page forty-two of the Budget Book Function thirty-two hundred, Medical and Health Services. Function thirty-two hundred, Medical and Health Services.
Second.
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Don?
Maria? Aye.
Page forty-three, Transportation.
Yep, on this particular page, no, no noticeable differences as far as staffing is concerned. We've updated our cost for our regular red transportation provider. That's what we include in the first line, our base contract. Our offset to the revolving fund and then our special ed and all the different, you know, late runs for afternoon activities at the two middle schools, the high school, foster and homeless get transportation. So those are your updated figures for next year.
Any reason for the jump in the foster? Is there new?
Yeah, that's a very unpredictable account. We, we don't know when a particular child is going to be placed in foster care or that we're going to be responsible for either paying the full amount or a cost share on that one. Again, it's, it's volatile. It's very similar to the homelessness number. And we're just trying to put a, based on current year, what our actuals might end up coming in at, trying to put a number in there that's a little bit more in line with where we think it's going to come in.
So we're going to be a little over in that this year?
We might, but again, I'm not overly concerned because of the whole page, but just going forward, I don't want to short-fund us. And then be in a situation where if our budget was a little tighter, we'd be scrambling to make up a difference.
And how much longer do we have in our contracts on both regular and special?
Regular red, which is our big yellow bus contracts, it was a five-year contract, and we have two years remaining on that contract, correct me if I'm wrong.
We're in year three now.
Right, so we have two more years.
That's right.
I was right.
Right.
And then, sped, we have one more year. So our special ed contract, we have one more year on that, so we'll have to go out to bed. Correct. Didn't we have one more year on sped?
Uh, longer.
Do we?
Are you talking out of district or in district?
No. Well, actually, yeah, we have two separate contracts, we're in and out of district.
So in, in district, we're still on a very old one.
Right.
And out of district, we're in year two of, uh, three with a one and one renewal.
With a two, all right. So minimally, we have a year left on sped, but then we do have, we can exercise the option clauses of four and five, so we got a little bit of play.
We're still in the same situation with very few competitive bidders?
There's one.
Yeah, so one. That's very few.
Right.
All right, any other questions on this particular page?
We're having a hard time getting crossing cards, aren't we?
We only employ, we fund three. But I think at most, we've only employed one lately out in front of McCarthy. There was funding previously for a position at Harrington, again, just based on needs and necessity where kids are coming from. It doesn't seem to be an issue right now. And there was another one at the driveway, the high school that leads to Parker, that back road. But that one hasn't been filled with. It's a very difficult job to get someone to want to do, but we don't actually have the demand right now, student-wise. So it hasn't been a big issue for us. We still fund it in the event that we ever had to add something for a particular student that was coming and going. It's, there's no benefits associated with the position. It's just a part-time position. And it's easy to fund it in the event we ever had to add it. Then again, scramble in the end.
Okay, any other questions on this page?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of three million eight hundred forty-two thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars on page forty-three of the Budget Book, Function thirty-three hundred, Transportation.
Second.
Jeff? Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, page forty-four, Food Services. Any questions on this one? Doesn't look like many changes.
No, just an update and, and call a salary for the year. Everything else is consistent on this page.
I move that we approve the bottom line budget of one hundred nineteen thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars on page forty-four of the Budget Book, Function thirty-four hundred, Food Services.
Second.
Any questions?
Just a quick one?
Yes.
Go ahead. Under Other Expenses, Uncollected Debt? So we don't have anything allocated for that this?
Yes, we don't actually allocate any funding in the budget for that. That's the vote that comes in at the end of June when we figure out how much the uncollected debt's going to be. So it only appears as an actual in the budget.
All right.
So your actual spend in eighteen was the sixteen one sixty-nine, and the actual was twenty-one oh seventy-seven in nineteen. But we won't know what, we don't have a budget number, so we won't know what that number is until the end of June. So we'll then recommend out of some of our favorable accounts, an amount to be paid toward that. You'll transfer money in, we'll make the payment. It'll appear as an actual in twenty, but you won't actually see that in the budget until next year.
So that amount is just unpaid lunch fees?
Correct. Uncollected.
Uncollected lunch fees.
Correct.
So essentially, every year, there will be some, but we don't budget for it.
Correct.
We went up quite a bit, huh?
What's that?
I'm sorry, I apologize. We went up quite a bit from, the actual from eighteen to nineteen.
We did. Kids reading a lot. Uh, it's year to year, though, it, it really does fluctuate. And this is just the uncollectibles on, you know, the kids who don't qualify for free and reduced lunch. Collection efforts continue. You know, but we really won't know until the end of June what that's going to be. We typically have a favorable balance somewhere in the budget, so it's not worth at the outset, setting aside funding. We'll just bring in that recommendation at the end of the year.
Okay.
To pay for that.
Anything that you question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, we already had a motion and a second, so Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Page forty-five, Athletic Department. Any questions on this one? On the transportation, is it decreased because of the use of the new minibus?
Yeah, I actually would have hoped it would have gone down a little bit more, but even though the minibus is offsetting and you're going to see that again, we're adding runs because teams are having more competition, so it actually would be a greater savings for the minibus. We will show you that after we finish the whole year, but yes, that is part of it.
Other questions on this page?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of six hundred sixty thousand five hundred and two dollars on page forty-five of the Budget Book, Function thirty-five ten, Athletic Department.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 Okay, forty-six, Other Student Activities. Questions?
What's that?
This, this is what Paige always makes me laugh.
I know. We, we talk about it every year.
Every year.
So the only noticeable thing to point out on this page, again, you won't be taking this vote this evening. It'll be prepared as a separate vote. But we have included funding in this particular page to be able to, again, reduce our middle school student activity fee from seventy-five dollars a year down to fifty dollars a year. So, and we, we can have a dialogue about this later. It's not that, I'm not for totally wiping out fees, but I think actually fifty dollars for a complete year of activities and transportation and whatnot is a nice buy-in, bless you, for the people to be able to kind of commit to that program. Obviously, there are waivers if someone really can't afford it. There's that vehicle there to be able to help them, so this isn't cost prohibitive. But again, we've come from a hundred dollars down to seventy-five, down to fifty. I'm happy that we're able to accomplish that within the budget. And that is why you see a little uptick in the, the line item, because it's to compensate for that, that decrease.
Maria? I'm sorry, Donna?
But do you want?
Yeah, I'll hand them.
Go ahead, Donna.
Oh, I did.
Uh, one thing I would recommend is, I know that we're doing a review of clubs and advisors and stipends. And I would recommend that that committee take a look at this page to see if there's any other things that we either want to include or eliminate. But, you know, we have other clubs that, you know, such as the robotics, the, the bands, the acapellas, things like that, that, you know, we want to consider how it, you know, how it is, how much, if we want to help offset some of their costs. Because they do tend to be pretty expensive, you know, the entry fees and whatnot to some of the competitions. So I, I, I'm only asking that we, as I said, have the, have that committee take a look at this.
Is that committee coming up pretty soon?
Soon.
Okay.
Yeah, very soon.
So, um...
The only thing, can I just add one quick thing? The charge of that committee is really to look at the stipend amounts.
Okay.
So I don't think it's really, it'd be outside of the purview of that committee to look into, like, the budgetary pieces of it. That might be a conversation we certainly can have. I'm not opposed to having it, but that might be more appropriate to have with the school committee.
Okay.
With input from the different clubs. But I don't know that we'll get into all that dialogue within that study committee.
But so that's confusing to me, because what's the difference between that and the Student Activity Advisors?
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what we're going to be talking about. The, the dollar amounts that we're paying for the different Student Activity Advisors. What I'm just saying is... Yeah, correct.
So, so right here, this, this line item, Student Activity Advisors are all your stipends to all of these folks, okay?
So that's what we will be talking about.
Yes, that's that, that line item. But the thing that's confusing, and I think that Donna is, is talking about, and I, I understand too, at least this is what I'm thinking, is, okay, here we've got other expenses for six things that we run, okay, as activities, I think.
Right.
Because it's under this Student Activities, um, area here. But we have twenty clubs or more throughout the whole district. And so those particular clubs are self-funded and don't get reimbursed on anything. So why do we have particular ones that do and particular ones that don't? I, I think that's confusing.
That's, that's the annual, the annual question that Dennis asked.
Yeah, it's, it's been like this for...
This is just what, what has been here. This is what I inherited.
Well, we can't just do whatever's always been.
Right, but this is, what I'm trying to say to you is that the hundred and fifty-two nine is going to be part of the work of that subcommittee. If the school committee...
It's part of, it's part of what we need to look at, which, you know...
Correct.
We're, we're, we're coming upon. So I think, as part of that, we need to look at that.
Right, but I'm just saying that the subcommittee will look at the stipend piece. But the amounts that the extra clubs receive through the other expenses really is not within the purview of that group. That would be something that the school committee would look at.
We'll look at it to our agenda, okay.
I'd word that. We'll, we'll add that to our...
Thank you. That was some good information from that group.
Oh, we'll get, yes, we want input from the advisors. I'm just saying that that would be a whole other thing for the club, for that, that group to look into.
Okay.
Anything else on this page? Just, just on, on the night school instruction, we still do night school or? Okay. All right, I know what that would reduce quite a bit.
We, we do it through, as you knew it, we do it online, but we do have a night school instructor that has to check in with the students. We wouldn't just let them go off.
All right, any other questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line, bottom line budget figure of one hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred ninety dollars on page forty-six of the Budget Book, Function thirty-five twenty, Other Student Activities.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye. Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Donna, did you vote?
I did. I said aye.
Five-zero. Okay, forty-seven, School Security. Look like any?
No, no significant changes, just updates with regard to the, the wages under the collective bargaining agreements.
Questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of two hundred six thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars on page forty-seven of the Budget Book, Function thirty-six hundred, School Security.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Donna, did you wait for eye contact?
I was. I fell asleep at the wheel twice. I don't want to do it again, so.
All right, forty-eight, Custodial Services. Any questions on this one?
Nothing, nothing new and exciting, just year over year.
And this is a group we're starting to negotiate with?
Yeah, so the custodian group has, that's the one contract that's out of sync with all of our other contracts, so that one ends this coming June thirtieth. All the other contracts are settled for next year, so this one's negotiations will begin soon.
Okay, so do we have a cola reserve somewhere else to?
Yeah, that was in the front part of the budget. There was a, you know how we have that line item, our cola reserve, we did the same for this group?
Okay.
So that's in the front part of the budget.
Any questions?
I have a question about the motion, but no question about the... Are these three separate, forty-one ten, forty-two ten, forty-two thirty, those are all separate?
Just forty-one ten to forty-two thirty. It's a range.
Correct, just made sure. I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one million seven hundred nineteen thousand six hundred forty dollars on page forty-eight of the Budget Book, Function forty-one ten through forty-two thirty, Custodial Services.
Second.
Aye.
Donna?
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, forty-nine, Heating and Utilities. Any questions there?
It's cold right now.
It's what?
Never mind. She's cold.
It is cold in here tonight.
How are we doing this year, given that it has been a pretty mild winter? Are we good on utilities and?
So far, we're good. You know, it's February. We've gotten the bills through, you'll see them this week through January, so, so far, so good.
Any questions there?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one million two hundred thousand five hundred fifteen dollars on page forty-nine of the Budget Book, Function forty-one twenty through forty-one thirty, Heating of Buildings and Utility Services.
Second.
Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, page fifty, Employee Separation Costs. Seems like down a bit?
It's just based, this is a year-to-year, based on the actual number of people who are retiring. They have to give us notice by a certain date, and then we're able to calculate what our liability is for the payment. So this just ties to the number of retirements and who's eligible, who's not for the payment for the year.
Questions?
I move that we approve the bottom line budget figure of one hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars on page fifty of the Budget Book, Function fifty-one fifty, Employee Separation Costs.
Second.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
John, you're getting good at this just as we finish.
I know, repetition, repetition.
All right, page fifty-one, Tuitions.
Yep, so just a couple of things to note on this particular page of the budget. We are anticipating a slight decrease in out-of-district tuitions for next year, as noted in the first line. And then we have several lines that are offsets to the budget. We have an offset for circuit breaker funds. So those are funds that we anticipate coming in to help reduce some of the costs of the out-of-district tuition. In addition to covering tuition costs for next year, as you recall under the Student Opportunity Act, they're going to start to factor in some reimbursement. They're going to phase it in over four years, twenty-five percent, fifty, seventy-five, and then a hundred for some of our out-of-district costs. So we have included a little bit of money for that, but we actually want to see what that set aside is going to, to be before we get too aggressive with that. We are not taking an offset next year in school choice funds, because those funds are going to be dedicated to the one-on-one initiative. I don't really want to be pulling from the tech budget in this and overextend us in that particular fund so that that whole project can be completely sustainable outside of the local operating budget. And last, we are anticipating some additional revenue coming back from Valley Collaborative. Again, that's an offset we get each year where a member district of the collaborative, when they have revenue in excess of what they can retain at fiscal year-end, they have to proportion it back to their member districts. We ended up getting a little bit less than, this year than we had budgeted. And I'm just being a little less aggressive on the number that we think we're going to bring in for next year. That's a, a number that can fluctuate, again, based on actuals, and we can't predict how much excess, how much excess revenue Valley is going to have. So again, that's a number that's in play a little bit. I'm very comfortable with it being at least a hundred and twenty-five. So that's why we've recommended that, that number.
Any questions on this particular page? Donna, you have a question?
No, I have no questions.
John?
I move that we approve the bottom line bu- budget figure of three million one hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred forty-five dollars on page fifty-one of the Budget Book, Function ninety-three hundred, Tuitions.
Second.
I've tried to make eye...
Slow with the wheel, Donna.
I was just...
Okay. Jeff? Aye. Donna?
Tough crowd.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Last page. Any question before we go to the last page? Everybody good? No, no need to go back to anything, correct?
I just have a question.
Yeah?
Before we vote on the final amount, do we have to hear from anybody that wants to talk about anything we've talked about? In, throughout this process? Or do we do that as part of the public comments?
We can do public comments. If people have comments at the end, they can still make them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all we have after this is, um, conference and field trips.
Yeah. So there'll be another public comment section if anybody wants to come in. All right, any other things before we, okay, so bottom line? All right, any other things before we, okay, so bottom line, sixty-three million?
Yeah, bottom line is listed on page fifty-two, and then again, further delineated in the beginning pages of the budget, ties to sixty-three million for fiscal twenty-one, that would be our local operating budget request of town meeting. As I mentioned earlier, it's in line with the town manager's recommendation, so we'd be going to town meeting with kind of a unified budget request for the, for the school department, so. Just, again, as an aside, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, I think this budget really continues to add some programming in very kind of strategic and specific places in our budget that we've talked about over time. I do think it makes progress towards, again, class size, that we've talked about, additional services at the elementary school level, adding programming to the middle school level to complement our elementary therapeutic program. And again, a couple of offsets, you know, continuing to fund the one-on-one initiative, which I think is significant, and doing so outside of the operating budget, reducing fees, being able to reduce that student activity fee for the middle school, I think that's another good step. So I'm very happy with what we've been able to propose and to accomplish within the funding parameters that we have.
Any questions, comments? I just want to, again, commend the superintendent and his staff for putting together this budget and, you know, really being thoughtful about what our students need or what our teachers need, and, you know, I think it's a good budget, and I, you know, hopefully get the support of the town, I think the town manager's select board also for, you know, supporting the schools, so.
Yeah, the whole, just again, the whole budget process is a long process. It starts for us in the fall. We get input from a wide range of people throughout the, the fall, the winter, as we're putting this together with Joanna and her staff, and it's, it's not done overnight, it, it's quite time-consuming, so I appreciate all the work that everyone does on the budget to bring it to this point.
All right, John, one last...
All right, I move that we approve the $63 million local operating budget for the Chelmsford Public School as delineated on page sixteen of the Budget Book, the summary level line item totals.
Second.
Okay, Jeff?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Five-zero. John, I mean Donna?
When we put this together, I think he and I have talked about, we're going to include that PTO page as part of our budget presentation at town meeting, and then also to reach out to some of the other groups in town that provide significant support financially for these groups, the ACA, the Chelsford Friends of Music, the Athletic Boosters, things like that.
Yeah, any group that really is associated and supports us, we reserve that last appendix of the budget to be able to do that, so we'd like to do that again this year. We typically have not included that in this version of the budget, but that will be included in the budget that goes to town meeting in April.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we'll work on that much.
And we're going to try to get this ready for pre-town meeting, so it's available for...
Well, hopefully, that, the version that has that, the appendix?
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. Correct, okay. All right, well, thank you all for getting through that.
Thank you.
All right, so last item on our agenda is approval of a couple of field trips.
Yes, we have just two field trips before you this evening. One is, excuse me, high school-related, the students in the DECA program at the end of this week to attend the DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston, Massachusetts, that's an overnight trip. And a second field trip is for Parker Middle School, this is their eighth-grade class trip to Canobie Lake on June fifteenth at this point in time, and that's in, it's a day trip, it's not overnight, but it's in New Hampshire, so that's why it's on the agenda for you. But I'd recommend approval of both trips.
Do you have any questions either?
I make a motion to approve the conference field trip requests as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not much easier. Five-zero. All right, any liaison reports?
I met with the Alumni Association, and just to mention again, March twenty-first, Hall of Fame, George Simonian was here at our last meeting to talk about it. They also had a, a report done by Mr. John Carson about the future in fundraising in the Alumni Association, it was pretty extensive, and John did, as with everything, a wonderful job with it, so. I'll be back there next week, so I'm sure George will have more for me to report.
Anybody else? I attended the CHS Boosters Club, so that's a, for those that know, parent group that raised money to help pay for end-of-season awards, jackets, scholarships, it's all volunteers, they do most of fundraising through the snack shacks and the snack tables at the various events, very organized group, you know, very impressed with them, where they're at right now in terms of their fundraising and, and all the different things that you're trying to do to kind of promote the boosters, I don't know if you, on Facebook, three, four posts a day from, you know, the Boosters Club, which is great, you know, they're trying to try to make themselves more visible, and they, they do great things for our student athletes, so it was nice to, to attend that meeting and be going back to them a couple months. All right, any...
Actually, I did have a couple.
Go ahead.
One is the Chelsford Friends of Music met, and they're actually putting out a grant application for teachers to be able to apply for grants, to the music teachers to be able to apply for grants, to be able to support their programming. And then I also attended the ACA, which is the Apocalypse Acapella Group? I can't say this.
How do you say it, Donna?
Apocalypse, is that what, did I say it right? Okay, so that event is happening, now this is one you can't miss, okay? That is on April ninth and tenth, Archicalender J, okay? Because this is a terrific performance, I mean, if you, like the Thursdays at, was it Thursdays? No, it was the Crescendos that were at town meeting, you're going to love this performance. It not only involves our kids, but there's other groups that come in as well, so.
How'd you say the name of the event again?
Stop that. Aca, aca...
Fuck, I lip-choke.
You know what you mean.
Thank you.
This week, the students mentioned this at the beginning, this weekend is the competitive play at the high school. We, Chelmsford will be on stage around two o'clock, if you're interested in seeing the play that's being performed this year for Chelmsford, but another interesting thing is to see all the other schools that come. So if you have a chance, it is on Saturday, starts very early in the morning, goes throughout the day, and it's about every hour and a half or so, you've got a performance going on stage, and ours will be around two o'clock. It has been in training, and they've been rehearsing, they've been lining everything up, and I think it's going to be amazing. We usually do very well, so come and support it if you can, it would be wonderful.
Saturday, Maria?
Saturday. Try one of my brownies, Jeff, when you're there.
I look undernourished.
It's amazing the number of parents that participate in this day, to make it all happen, and really kudos to them, because it's, it's a lot of work, but it brings a lot of students together, and the amazing thing is to see how dedicated everybody is[1623.87]